Good evening, and thank you for tuning into our first ever virtual State of the City address tonight, March 15th. We're going to continue to follow public health guidance to avoid the spread of COVID-19. But before we get started, I wanted to briefly go over the public comment procedures for the evening. There will be one opportunity for public comment this evening on items that are on or off the agenda under item number four. When public comment is called, you may raise, you may use the raise hand feature on Zoom to speak. If you're joining the teleconference by phone, you may raise your hand by dialing star nine and star six to unmute your microphone when prompted. Please only raise your hand at the time that the item on which you are speaking is called. The allotted time for public comment may be adjusted if there are a large number of speakers. Council members Aguirre, Espinoza Garnica, G, Ready, and Smith, Vice Mayor Hale, and myself will participate by teleconference pursuant to Governor Newsom's executive order N dash twenty-nine dash twenty. The city council chambers will not be open to the public. The meeting is being broadcast live to Redwood City residents on astound broadband cable channel twenty-six, Comcast cable channel twenty-seven, AT&amp;T U-verse channel ninety-nine, and are streamed live via the city's website at www redwoodcity.org. City council members and city staff will have video enabled during the meeting. We ask for your patience with any technical difficulties that may occur. I'd now like to ask the city clerk if she will call the roll.
Good evening, Councilmember Aguirre.
Here.
Councilmember Espinoza Garnica.
Here.
Councilmember G.
Here.
Councilmember Ready.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hale.
Here.
And Mayor Howard.
Here.
Thank you.
I'd now like to ask Councilmember G if he will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in saluting the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it serves, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Councilmember G. We now move on to item number four, public comment. At this time, we will take public comment on any items that are on or off the agenda. This will be the only opportunity for public comment tonight. If you wish to make public comment at this time, please click the raise hand button on Zoom to be recognized by myself. If you're joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute yourself when prompted to speak. In order to see how many speakers we have for public comment, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak, please raise your hand now. I have no speakers at this time. I'll give it another minute. At this time, I see no speakers' hands raised. If you would like to give the council any comments you may have, you can always email So now we're going to move on to item number five, which is the presentation of our State of the City address. I'd like to start by welcoming everyone. We have quite a few attendees, and that's very exciting. And for those of you at home watching us on TV, welcome. I'd like to ask each council member to introduce themselves, please, before we get started, and I'll start with our Vice Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. I am Vice Mayor Giselle Hale.
Councilmember G. We'll just go right on down.
Good evening, everyone. Jeff G, Councilmember, District One, Redwood Shores. Glad to be here tonight. Thanks for joining us.
Councilmember Ready.
Good evening, Diana Ready. Councilmember for the whole city, I guess. Welcome, welcome from me as well. I'm so happy to see that we have so many people joining us tonight.
Councilmember Lizette Espinoza Garnica.
Hi, folks. My name is Lizette Espinoza Garnica. My pronouns are she-day, and yes, I am councilmember from District Three.
Councilmember Smith.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Michael Smith. I'm representing District Four here in Redwood City. I just want to thank everyone for joining us.
Okay, I think, I'm sorry, Councilmember Aguirre, I don't see her on the screen. Councilmember Aguirre, are you with us?
Yes, I've been here. Lizette Aguirre, Councilmember from District Seven.
Great, it's great to have you here. And I'm Mayor Diane Howard, and I am very pleased to be with you this evening. And on behalf of the council, I want to tell you, welcome to our first virtual State of the City. This year's State of the City theme is a quote from esteemed Albert Einstein, "Learn from yesterday, live for today, and hope for tomorrow." With our city council colleagues, we will briefly share some ways in which we have come together over this last year, spending most of the evening sharing where we are going and what we have planned for the year to come. I want to thank you for joining us this evening, for your engagement and your input, and for our partners, both in Redwood City and throughout San Mateo County. We couldn't have gotten through this past year without all of their support, from calling a neighbor to check on them, to financial donations, to keeping our small businesses afloat. It truly has been a year where our world was rocked upside down, and we still have a ways to go, but we will get there. Let's begin by watching a short video on some of the ways in which we have come together as a community over this past year, as we have had to tread through the unknown, treacherous, and unsettling waters due to the COVID-19 pandemic. We know we will. Let's stay calm, work together, and we'll get through it.
To say hi to these people, these nice people. I love everything that they're doing, and I appreciate it.
Yes, it really helps out a lot financially, and yeah, it's just a big help all the way around.
Well, you know, it's all the people. They're all so nice. They're also wonderful. We love every one of them.
Man, they've stepped up to the plate with this thing going on with lunches, and it's just so wonderful, and the speeches they make to help us out and give us encouragement.
One of the mottos here at the Fair Oaks Community Center is, "Help is here," and that truly, I've truly been able to see that here.
I love helping people. I'd love putting at least a smile or at least a little bit of relief on their face once they leave.
One of the things that drove me to become a police officer is I do want to help with the community. I want to give back.
Everyone can go home and feel like, hey, you know what? At the end of the day, I did something that helped somebody else.
I hope that you were able to enjoy seeing just a snippet of the work that we have been doing over this past year. I invite you to visit our YouTube channel to watch this video again. To begin, I would like to share some information on the current status of vaccination efforts. As of March 11th, over forty-two percent of individuals have received at least one dose of their vaccination. Beginning today, March 15th, individuals with certain medical conditions will be receiving it shortly. At the San Francisco International Airport continues to host San Mateo County's largest vaccination center, where thousands of residents of our residents are receiving their shots on a daily basis. We continue to work with the county and local partners to provide outreach to our community with particular care for those that are harder to reach. You might sometimes see our fire department personnel in our firefighting gear, perhaps in their inspection uniforms, or maybe in their medical PPE, but you may see them as vaccinators in the coming weeks as more of the general public receive their shots. Over the last six weeks, our Redwood City Fire Department participated in the first responder vaccination clinic in San Mateo County. We were fortunate that our staff was able to not only receive the vaccine, but also were able to vaccinate others throughout the county. The city council recently approved additional funds to support the fire department's efforts to administer vaccines, and we thank them for stepping up in this very important role. The sooner we are able to administer the vaccines, the sooner we will be able to return to some resemblance of what life looked like pre-pandemic. Although we are all feeling fatigued by COVID, it is extremely important for us all to stay vigilant with wearing our masks, socially distancing, washing our hands, and limiting our interactions with others outside of our households. Even if you've received your vaccine, we need everyone to continue to follow these health-safety guidelines as much as possible. The county also continues to offer safe, easy, and no-cost testing widely available at many locations, including right here in Redwood City and North Fair Oaks. Please visit www.smcgov.org slash testing for more information. Moving on now to the city's response to COVID-19. Last year, the city council endorsed the Financial and Community Recovery Strategy to help our community and organization meet the health, economic, and social challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic nicknamed the three Rs. Respond to immediate community needs resulting from the COVID-19 pandemic with particular care for vulnerable residents. Restore community cultural, economic, and social vitality in partnership with community organizations and businesses. And reimagine public services in light of evolving community needs and limited financial resources. A lot of this work has already begun, and many activities to advance these goals are As you may recall, right at the beginning of this pandemic, the city council took action in March 2020 to fund a COVID-19 Emergency Rental Assistance Fund, which is managed by the Fair Oaks Community Center. This program has helped households, including childcare providers, who have experienced a loss of income due to COVID-19 and have no other alternative source of income, such as paid leave or unemployment insurance. For many, this program has been instrumental in making the difference between being able to stay in their homes and being displaced. As of February, over $3.3 million has been provided in rental relief to our service area almost exclusively Redwood City and North Fair Oaks. I want to extend my sincere appreciation to all our partners that have provided funding to support this program and to the core agency network. We did receive some good news recently, which is that the county has elected to utilize the State COVID Emergency Financial Assistance Fund mechanism to distribute $47 million in federal funding available for landlords and tenants impacted by COVID-19 in San Mateo County, $47 million. The Core Agency Network via Samaritan House has led agency, as lead agency, has been selected to be a local partner with the Local Initiative Support Corporation, the state-selected administrator of the COVID Emergency Financial Assistance Program. We are still awaiting details about the program, but we do anticipate that we will be supporting landlords and tenants from our service area in applying for assistance. The state ERAP online application is scheduled to go live today, March 15th. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Aguirre to share a few stories from our residents on how this program has impacted their lives.
Thank you, Mayor. It's amazing to see all of the things that we've been doing, but the need is so huge. I see these two amazing people, Anna and Jose, in this picture, and the work that's been done by the Fair Oaks Community Center has really been God-sent for our community, especially for all the folks that didn't have anywhere else to go. And I'd like to share a few stories about some of the work that has been done and some of the community members that have been supported. There were three young men, all-day laborers, who they subleased a room for $1,200 a month, and the community center initially assisted them with one month's rents due to the loss of the income for the first two months with the state-at-home order. But by late July, all three men managed to get some work on the street here and there and pay off the back rent except for one month. In anticipation of the August 31 expiration of the county's moratorium on evictions, Fair Oaks Community Center assisted them with two more months of rental assistance to cover the back month's rent and assured that their September rent would be covered, anticipating that they would not be able to secure sufficient income to pay their rent on time for September. These young men were extremely thankful for the city's help in allowing them to stay in their home. Another group that we think about all the time and that we really try to serve, it's one of our goals, our families with children. So there's a family of five with three daughters, daughters our age, five, seven, and 12, and they rent a small home with their husband and adult sister and their 12-year-old son in unincorporated Fair Oaks. The husband works full-time for a tree service that was out of work for the two months due to COVID, and the sister works as a house cleaner full-time and was out of work due to COVID as well. Both are ineligible for unemployment benefits. Between the two families, they managed to pay their April and May rent, but had to use all of their savings. The family was assisted with all of their June rent of $2,750. They were so appreciative of what Redwood City was allowing them to do and to stay in their home in Redwood City and to keep the two families together. This is just one of the many, many stories that we could tell you. Last Friday, Councilmember Smith and myself were at the Fair Oaks Community Center doing some work with food distribution. I can tell you, the need is great, and it continues. And now I'd like to turn it back over to our mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Aguirre. Over at our senior center, we continue to serve 600 seniors a week and have surpassed 80,000 meals handed out or delivered since March of last year. We have also presented many online classes, and our senior Zoom days have been full days of fun online. Our seniors are also most appreciative of all the ways in which our staff have been connecting with them, whether it is through writing letters, making phone calls, or having porch talks. Blood pressure screenings, we are also now offering free senior blood pressure screenings at the Redwood Shores Branch Library on the second Wednesday of each other, of each month from 11 to 1. I want to thank our partner, Dignity Health Sequoia Hospital, for making this happen. An update on the Veterans Memorial Building, Senior Center, and YMCA project. We are currently out to bid for the Veterans Memorial Building slash Senior Center project. This portion of the project will include demolition of the existing Senior Center, Pool, and NFL Alumni Buildings at the corner of Madison Avenue and Nevada Street. Staff expects to return to the city council for approval of the financing and the award of the contract in May or June. I'd now like to ask Councilmember Ready to please share a couple of stories from our seniors who really appreciate this program. Councilmember Ready?
Thank you, Mayor Howard. I can't express enough how impressed I am with the commitment of the staffs of our various departments. And it is my pleasure to particularly highlight the senior meal team that, for an entire year, has been providing loving service to seniors in our city. Chef Gavin, who often arrives at 5:00 in the morning and preps on the weekends, buys meals that are of such high quality, they could be served in the best restaurants.
Excuse me, Councilmember Ready, could I ask you to speak closer to the microphone? We're having a little trouble hearing you.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, that's much better.
Thank you for letting me know that. Listen, from Chef Gavin, who often arrives at 5:00 in the morning and preps on the weekends to provide meals that are of such high quality, they could be served in the best restaurants, to Bruce, who ensures that staff and volunteers, including our former council sister, Janet Morgans, have the tools they need to continue to make seniors feel connected and valued, to Anna, who commits personal hours to sewing masks and making holidays a true celebration for seniors, to Austin, who fields calls at all hours of the day and night and adds puzzles and contests for entertainment, and Eric, who personally engages seniors whose only human contact is often with the Monday through Friday senior meal team members. During this last year, it has become clear to me that the Veterans Memorial Senior Center is the center of social world for many seniors. Because of their longstanding relationship with and commitment to seniors, the senior center team has created a response to COVID that is unequaled in the county and perhaps the state. In addition, because of the relationship many seniors have developed during normal times, they continue to call each other to check in. These relationships are very powerful. One of our seniors is a gentleman who comes by most days of the week. When he first started coming, he drove through to collect his lunch. Then he started to park and walk up. He now walks the entire perimeter of the parking lot. He has lost a significant amount of weight and enjoys his daily visits with his newfound take on living life to the fullest. Those seniors that are homebound have their lunches delivered by reassigned library services and parks, recreation, and community services staff members. Temporarily reassigned staff and volunteers deliver and distribute almost 400 lunches per day. This daily check-in on seniors brightens their mood, and when needed, has become a tool for seeking medical assistance. It's more than just providing a meal. It is ensuring the safety and well-being of vulnerable seniors and being there for them, even when they don't know help is needed or how to ask. Thank you. I'll return this great snapshot of one of our city's initiatives during this challenging year back to Mayor Howard.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ready. Our Fair Oaks Community Center has maintained staffing with safety modifications in place so we can continue providing human services, including emergency food, homeless support services, safety net information, and referral services. Most recently, we have added a curbside drop-off for those low-income households needing assistance with their taxes. Our next event will be Saturday, March 17th, from 12 to 2 p.m. I want to thank our partners TaxAid, Redwood City Together, Karen, which is the community alliance to revitalize our neighborhood, and Kenyatta College for assisting with this important service. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Espinoza Garnica to please honor volunteer extraordinaire Jenny Moreau from the Fair Oaks Community Center.
Thank you, Mayor Howard. First, I'd like to start with, I definitely wasn't expecting myself to feel a major impact that I did watching the video, thinking about reflection, you know, on a year, because for me, and like many of us, especially essential workers like myself, this has been a difficult, tumultuous time, and for many of us, we've experienced a lot of instability, a lot of loss, and these, these resources, the types that provide for our, our vulnerable population, our homeless population, our elderly, our disabled, our low-income, are, we can see the benefit even more now, I think, because of the demands and the crisis that we're all, the pandemic, the coronavirus has presented all of us with. You know, for many of us, we were already, already dealing with the pandemic that is, you know, racism and sexism, and now on top, we have And now on top, we have a pandemic that's around COVID. So there's just so much that has to be dealt with. And we've really seen real champions come through and shine a light on all of this. And I'm glad to, to express some of the admiration for the work that they've been doing for Jenny Moreau, one of our volunteers. They have been helping with the senior bag and family harvest food distributions every month for the last three years. When COVID hit, when COVID hit, she continued her volunteer service as we shifted to drive-through operations. And many of our other regular volunteers had to step back due to COVID-19. Then last June, when we needed a food program coordinator to support our daily food distributions, she stepped up to volunteer and has continued in this role ever since. Every other week, she comes in daily, Monday through Friday, to join our Group B rotation at the Faroes Community Center, coordinating with all aspects of our daily food distributions, daily homeless help desk providing food, toiletries, and other needs for unsheltered members of our community. And Monday, Wednesday, Friday, emergency food distributions for any households needing food in our community. Her assistance has been a critical component for the city's ability to provide essential services for our community during the pandemic and helping us to assure the continuity of the homeless help desk. We are extremely grateful to Jenny for her generous gift of service. Thank you so much, Jenny, and for everyone else who's stepping up and helping in such, in such extreme conditions, really admirable work. Thank you very much, and I'll turn back over to the mayor now.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Espinoza Garnica. Looking now to the business side, we are so lucky to have so many wonderful businesses in Redwood City. We are the, we were the first city to contribute $300,000 to San Mateo County's strong funds that help small businesses in our community. Last month, the city council approved an additional $450,000 for small business support. In addition, the Chan Zuckerberg Initiative recently committed approximately $400,000 in grants to aid our businesses. Outreach, with reassigned library staff, we were able to set up a call center to call every business in the city of Redwood City to ask them if they needed our help. We recently held two business roundtable meetings to hear from our local businesses. With this information, we are in the process of developing an economic resiliency plan and establishing a marketing campaign shop local. I would like to thank the Chamber of Commerce, our downtown business group, and our Redwood City Improvement Association for all of their help and assistance during this very difficult year. At this time, I would like to ask Councilmember Smith if he would please share with us a couple of stories regarding the voices from our community.
Thank you so much, Mayor Howard. And I want to thank all of the small business people of Redwood City for your endurance, tenacity, and foresight during this challenging time. As some of you know, I teach small business and entrepreneurship at Kenyatta College as an adjunct professor. And besides the many theory-based conceptions of business, I always teach them that the secret sauce to any successful business is the ability for a small business person to navigate ambiguity, to problem-solve, and to imagine the future. There's been no year in recent memory that has challenged small business people to put those skills to use on a daily basis. And even within the darkness of COVID-19, innovation flourished among all our city's small businesses. Businesses embraced the digital shift and embraced engaging ways to talk to new customers. It's a testament to our small business community, our essential workers, and our residents who all stepped up to support businesses of all sizes. And while a number of our small businesses did not survive, I can confidently state that despite the respective outcomes, each member of our small business community demonstrated those prized qualities and continue to do so on a daily basis. And so I'd like to start by just sharing a story of the Araya Steakhouse. Farah and Mike Hashemi are the owners of Araya Steakhouse in downtown. As restaurant owners in the community, there isn't anything they would not have gone through. They shared that over the last nine years, that they have gone through all of it. While it's been a very, very difficult year, they are still fighting. With every interview, someone is asking them, when are you going to throw in the towel? And they say, no, we're not going to be part of this only at 30%. They have had years of hard work, tears, money, family hours, basically everything to be able to survive. They have been, they were very happy to enter the red tier because with a restaurant like theirs, they really need to the dining experience to happen. Having to rely on DoorDash and Uber to survive has been challenging, but they keep shifting and finding a different way to survive and keeping customers happy. They appreciate, appreciate everything everyone is doing, and I look forward to working together to encourage people to shop local. And I'd also like to add that I recently went to Araya Steakhouse, actually this past weekend. And I will say that their customer service and their ability to make folks feel like family who come into their doors is truly unparalleled. And I highly recommend anyone who hasn't been, please go and check out Araya. And so that leads me to just sharing Orange Theory's fitness, Kate Mosley. Kate Mosley is the owner of two Orange Theory Fitness Studios, which is a boutique small group fitness studio located in Redwood Shores, as well as Woodside Plaza. As you can imagine, she had been greatly affected by this situation. Kate was able to transition both studios to outdoors and then moved one of the studios to a covered parking garage for the past six months with the help of another local business. After the second shutdown, Kate had to close one of the studios because the outdoor option was no longer feasible. As the county starts to open up, Kate will be able to open both studios, but at a very reduced capacity. Needless to say, it has been very challenging for Kate. She shared the appreciation, appreciation to the city and was very excited to hear about the $450,000 to support small businesses, including those that are not restaurants. And again, I'd just like to thank all of our small businesses for really just sticking it out over this really challenging year. There are better days ahead, I can guarantee you that. And now I'll turn it back over to Mayor Howard. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Smith. We know there is a lot of interest and curiosity surrounding when our libraries will reopen indoors for visitors to actually come inside and enjoy our materials while spending an afternoon at the library. Beginning this week, March 15th, the downtown library is taking the next step by providing indoor access to computers and printing by appointment, with masks required and other safety precautions in place for staff and customers. The next phase of service, which doesn't have a specific timeline yet, will be allowing a limited number of library users to come in to browse collections and use self-checkout machines at all library locations. We are probably still some months away from more intensive in-person services like indoor events and seating for extended periods, but we are actively working on plans to restore these services. We too are anxious to welcome you back inside, but we want to ensure without a shadow of a doubt that we can do this safely for you and for our staff. Despite not being able to welcome you into our libraries, we are excited that you have been able to continue to enjoy our services from while socially distancing. 5,776, 353 items borrowed, 138,545 of which were eBooks. 13,953 curbside appointments were made. 378 online programs were held. 6,219 Summer Learning Challenge participants participated in our library. 20,197 attendees came for virtual events. 4,628 craft bags were handed out. 8,500 grocery packages were delivered, and 375 students served through Project Read. And we can't forget our library bees, which harvested 251 pounds of honey. I would now like to turn it over to our Vice Mayor, Giselle Hale.
Thank you, Mayor. What really strikes me at this point of the presentation is that in a normal year, everything that we've just presented would be enough. It would have covered everything that we did. But there is more. Because while our city and our staff was busy fighting the COVID-19 pandemic, we had to continue to advance our strategic priorities of housing, transportation, children, and youth. And so now we're going to give an update on where we are with those priorities. Our vision as a city is to be a community where people of all backgrounds and income levels can thrive. And our mission is building a welcoming Redwood City through collaboration, responsiveness, and excellence. While the three priorities I mentioned are of the highest importance, we also have nine guiding principles that you see here, which include aesthetics, communication and community building, economic vitality, excellence in government operations, a healthy community for all ages, housing, public safety, sustainability, and transportation. And last October, the city council took action to also include a foundational guiding principle of equity, that Redwood City would put equity first, urging a collective restart so that policies serve the entire community. I want to talk a little bit more about what that looks like. So over the last several months, the council has been actively engaged in listening, learning, and taking steps in support of diversity, equity, and inclusion. We continue to make progress on policing matters of interest to the community and also taking steps to advance racial equity. Speaking first to policing, the Redwood City Police Department has made progress on responding to the community's desire for more data-driven transparency and opportunities for improvement in policing matters. There were over a dozen actions in this space, so I'm just going to highlight a handful. First, the department made revisions to policies related to de-escalation. The use of force and other policing practices were completed through a comprehensive update of the Police Department Policy Manual, and those have been posted online. Second, we purchased body worn cameras and updated their associated policy. We also held a community meeting to share current information and answer questions related to the body worn camera program. Third, the police department has increased participation from young men and women with diverse backgrounds in our cadet program. The cadets support community programs, including safely-delivered holiday toys and book drive, COVID screening events at the Faroes Community Center, and regularly scheduled food and clothing distribution events for our homeless residents. Fourth, an interdepartmental team is preparing data regarding the police department's workforce and operations that will be released to the public on the city's website beginning in March. The police department does continue to hire and promote a diverse range of workforce members. And finally, the city council approved just this past month a two-year agreement for a pilot program with San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, along with three other cities, to form a mental health partnership crisis program. Clinician recruitment and community engagement on data collection and program measure development is in process. And this program is expected to launch in April. And finally, at the last city council meeting, we also approved the framework for establishing a police advisory committee to serve in an advisory capacity with the police, the city, the chief of police. And they would support partnership and transparency between the community and the police department. Ultimately, this committee would support diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives and the police department's goals to improve quality of life, reduce crime, and the fear crime. And if anyone is interested in serving on this committee, I would encourage you to submit an application on our website, redwoodcity.org/pac. And they are due March 31st, and we expect to appoint members in May. Outside of policing, the city has taken a number of actions to support and advance diversity, equity, and inclusion. To name just a few, the city recently appointed its first Equity and Inclusion Officer, Brianna Evans. She joins the city manager's office to support Redwood City in applying an equity lens in all of our work. The city council recently approved the Art Commission's work plan for the creation of a racial equity mural. And the Arts Commission launched recruitment for the Racial Equity Steering Committee. City staff are coordinating with the San Mateo County Vaccine Equity Team to ensure equitable distribution and information sharing regarding COVID-19 testing and vaccinations. The city is offering cultural humility workshops to all volunteers who serve on city advisory boards, commissions, committees, and even city council members. Two-thirds of appointees have registered for or completed the workshop to date, and more will be scheduled. And finally, the city has partnered with Stanford University through Redwood City Together, which was formerly Redwood City 2020, to conduct a study of social health and economic impacts from COVID-19 across the year. So there will be many more opportunities to continue the dialogue as we work to develop an equity work plan through the newly formed City Council Subcommittee on Equity and Social Justice. More to come there. Now I want to turn to our three foundational principles, starting with housing. Our vision for this priority is to meet our unique community housing needs for people at all income levels. There's no question, housing affordability is a crisis in California, and it has been for some time here in Redwood City. And prior to COVID, housing was already top of mind. It's just remained that way. COVID has exacerbated the challenges around housing security, and it has increased homelessness. We're working on real solutions to help both tenants and landlords, as well as our workforce in having affordable housing options and protections. On the preservation front, the city recently received a partnership for the Bay's Future Challenge Grant, which has provided resources to develop an anti-displacement strategic plan so that we can preserve unsubsidized affordable housing stock and mobile home parks, as well as amend the city's minimum lease terms and relocation assistance ordinances. And on housing production, 636 affordable units are currently approved or under construction, with 500 affordable units proposed in the near future. And the projects under construction include this one, the Arroyo Green at 707 Bradford, which has 117 affordable senior units, and it is expected to be completed this spring or summer. And I want to also add, it has a childcare built right into it. So it's a, it's a wonderful multi-generational project. We are just kicking off the update to our housing element, which is a once-in-a-decade opportunity to shape the city's housing plans for the future. The housing element process will look at a variety of housing options, such as small, multifamily housing, and it will include robust community engagement and an equity analysis. Over the next several months, we are looking to amend the city's affordable housing ordinance to include a preference for Redwood City residents and employees so that they can get access to all of this great affordable housing coming down the pipe. And I want to thank our regional partners, including the county and the nonprofit development community for their partnership in creating opportunities for people to call Redwood City home. Turning to our second priority, transportation. Our vision for this priority is to create and maintain a multimodal, safe, and accessible transportation network. Planning is underway for our transit district, which envisions a new transit center for trains and buses in the heart of downtown. The redevelopment of the transit district creates a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to rebuild the train station with more space for tracks, station amenities, and safer grade separations. New housing and jobs will be created, along with neighborhood shopping that features Safeway and CVS and other community amenities in the future. To make this a success, we want to hear more from you. So your family and your neighbors, we want you to prioritize, help us prioritize what's needed in this district. You can visit our online open house at rwctransitplan.com, as you can see there. Related to grade separation, we have six at-grade railroad crossings where train tracks meet vehicular roads. The railroad crossings at Woodside Road and Jefferson Avenue are examples of grade separations. To improve circulation, safety, and increase train service, additional grade separations are necessary. These separations have to be planned carefully to balance needs within the community and to ensure that road connectivity and safety are maximized. And there are currently four grade separation alternatives under consideration. And our next step is to conduct community meetings to determine the preferred option. And our next step is to conduct community meetings to determine the preferred option. You can view a video explaining all of the alternatives and also sign up to be notified when the community meetings are scheduled to begin this spring. Now, according to the collision analysis done for Redwood City Moves and the transportation monitoring report from January 2010 to December of 2018, we had 9,800 traffic collisions happen in Redwood City, with an annual average of 1,094. So traffic safety is one of our priority areas for Redwood City under transportation. And one of the transportation policy's goals is to create an action plan to implement Vision Zero strategies. Vision Zero is an approach to eliminate all traffic fatalities and severe injuries while increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. The city's transportation plan is also called RWC Moves. It focuses on a framework that the city will use to prioritize transportation projects and programs in Redwood City. It includes six goals, the first of which is eliminating traffic fatalities and severe injuries for all modes of transportation by 2030. So definitely something to reach for. So you can visit rwcmoves.com/resources to learn more about the other Vision Zero goals. And now I would like to turn it over, that was such a long segment, I would like to turn it over to Councilmember G to share a little bit of the feedback we heard, some of the stories we heard from the community about our Slow Streets Pilot Program.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale, and it's remarkable to think that it has been a year that we've been in this pandemic and the amazing things that the city has done, the staff, and our community volunteers. And how important it has been to be able to be outside between sheltering in place, distance learning, or kids at home and everything. And the city's Slow Streets program has been another breath of fresh air for residents. I'd like to take a few minutes here and share some stories from three of our residents about our Slow Streets Pilot Program. I live on East Oakwood Boulevard, one of the streets selected as a slow street. I wanted to applaud you for implementing this initiative. The number of people walking and biking past my house has greatly increased. Our neighborhood hasn't always been a good place for children to ride bikes, and we have no sidewalks. And now I see families riding by at all hours of day. I hope we continue this even after we move beyond this pandemic. Another resident shared, "I just wanted to voice my opinion that the Slow Streets program has been a huge boon for my family. We live a block away from Katherine and has brought us so much joy during this bleak time." Lastly, another resident shared, "I want to say thank you for the Slow Streets program you have implemented here in Redwood City. My family and I have benefited from the closure of Katherine, and since you've done this, my children and I have been out there daily, sometimes several times a day. We don't have much of a yard to play in, so the opening of the street has really made a difference to our ability to get out and play, get exercise, and further explore our neighborhood, all while being able to social distance from others. As the county and Redwood City moves toward the orange tier, I hope that we do continue our Slow Streets program. And I hope all of us remember that we all live here, our families live here, and our children live here because it's also been a year where our children have been out and about. And as our schools reopen in the different ways that they will open, hopefully we'll all remember to slow down and be safe and keep your neighborhood safe for everyone." Thank you, Vice Mayor Hale. Turn the presentation back to you.
That is a fantastic reminder as kids head back to school. Thank you, Councilmember G. And it's also a fantastic tradition to our third and final priority, which is children and youth, one that is certainly near and dear to my heart. It has been an incredibly difficult year for children and youth and for families. Our vision for this priority is to create opportunities for children and youth to grow, learn, and play in safe and healthy environments. This year, we had to, we worked with the County COVID Child Care Relief Fund and administered through the Community Equity Collaborative over $800,000 in funds to support continued services through our childcare providers who are experiencing the impacts of COVID-19 with reduced revenues and increased costs. Really grateful we were able to do that. We've supported the Redwood City Child Development Program at Fair Oaks Community Center, which has safely provided childcare for 52 children. These are often the children of essential workers who need to go to work, so grateful we could do that. And we're currently providing distance learning support to 100 students at five sites across the city. And all of our playgrounds, parks, and fields were reopened, and we are still excited about the opening of our Magical Bridge Playground near Red Morton Park. If you have not been, you should definitely go. It is a true gem in our city for everyone of all abilities to be able to play. Looking ahead, we have more to be excited about in this space. We have a $275,000 community development block grant, federal funding for family childcare business grants, which is absolutely essential right now to help them continue services. We're initiating construction of the Pirate Ship Imagination Space that you see here at the Redwood Shores Library. We're supporting a new preschool at the Arroyo Green, the building a few slides ago, on Bradford Street, which will provide 70 spaces of childcare right downtown. We've been assisting youth sports organizations with hosting in-person player training in compliance with the public health mandates and supporting school districts in returning to in-person classes or hybrid schedules. We will also have more classes and programs available through the Spring 2021 Activity Guide, which is now available. And today is actually the last day to register for the 5K Your Way program. And we will continue to look for more ways for our children and youth to have fun in this city, which I know is still so important, that our children can have a wonderful experience even during such a difficult time. I want to say thank you so much to all of the staff who have gone above and beyond this year to serve our community and to my council colleagues for your partnership, leadership, and service. And I'll turn it back to our mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Hale. Again, I want to thank all of our amazing partners for helping us get through one of the most challenging times we have ever experienced. We truly would not have been able to get through this without you. On behalf of the city council, I also want to ensure that our city staff know how much we appreciate them. This past year, our workforce has shown that they are second to none, and we are so proud of all the work that has been accomplished. Our workforce has had to pivot and adapt to unprecedented situations. They had to reach beyond their usual duties and wear multiple hats to address the changing needs of our community. On behalf of our city council and staff, I also want to extend our condolences to those of you in the community who have lost family, friends, and coworkers. Finally, I want to thank our community for their patience and cooperation with the changing rules and requirements that were asked of you. I have said before that our community is like a great sailboat that adapts to changing winds and tides. This past year, we have been subjected to winds and tides unprecedented in their severity. We are near the finish line, but we cannot relax. Please continue to mask up, wash your hands, and maintain social distance. And as you feel more comfortable, shop locally to help support our businesses. As a community, we are resilient. We are innovative, and we are proud. We are Redwood City. As we conclude this evening's presentation, I encourage each and every one of you to live your life to the fullest. We know it was a hard year, one that was full of loss, full of uncertainty, and at times despair. But we have learned from yesterday. We saw things from a different perspective, many of us vowing to not take the little things in life for granted. A haircut, a meal with a friend, a hug from your grandchild. We will not forget those who have lost, but rather we will honor them as we live for today. Wade into your life and embrace the opportunities to reemerge from this pandemic with a sense of triumph, eagerly taking a chance on something you may not have otherwise. Show compassion to others, relentlessly ignited to achieve harmony and peace for all. We can't promise another day, but we can certainly hope for tomorrow. Now let's go out together and build a brighter future for Redwood City. On behalf of our city council and our city staff, I wanted to thank you all for being with us this evening. We truly appreciate it, and have a good night. Thank you.